Okay, we'll have a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to call this meeting of the Montague County Commission to order. The record reflected all three commissioners are present, and this is the last meeting of 2021. So we'll start with consent and approval with our county administrator, Renata McClure. Good morning, Renata.
Good morning. We have no exonerations to approve today. Minutes for December 15th, 2021. Vouchers: General County Fund, $50,005,056.911, $11,447.68. Chestnut Ridge Park, $5,007,9560. Kemp Monthly, $1,001.55. Mason Dixon Park, $2,009.1949. Recreation Levy, $2,014.365. Assessors' valuation, $211.79. Payroll, $975,057.59. Purchasing Card vouchers, General County Fund, $12,633.65.911, $215.10. Chestnut Ridge Park, $8.20. Assessors' valuation, $95.45. For a voucher total of $1,063,518.66. We have position vacancies for boards and authorities listed on our website. Fiduciary orders for December 22nd, 2021.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Still move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay.
Thank you.
Any special fiduciary items?
No, sir.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is introduction to new employees, personnel changes. See none?
We have none.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is comments from the public. Now open the comments from the public session of the meeting. Anybody wishing to address the commissions should come forward, state your name and address, and be heard.
May I give you a sheet of paper? It'd be easier to follow.
Okay. And we won't even count that towards your minutes, huh?
Thank you. And what about sharing your crackers?
Now, that's another story.
You're pushing it there, Mr. Nick.
And you can remove your mask at the podium if you'd like to.
Yes.
Appreciate that. I bought the test kit at the drugstore yesterday for the first time I was able to get one. So I tested myself last night because I was interested and see how it worked. And it worked good, and I was negative, fortunately.
We're glad to hear that, yes.
Well, my name's Dewayne Nichols. I live in Stuartstown. It's 330 Dreamcatcher Circle in Morgantown. The address is on the back of the sheet. I represent the Mon Valley Clean Air Coalition. I have been here before to talk about the proposed data center, also known as the Science Center, in Morgantown Industrial Park. I contacted Glenn Adrian. I've talked to him on the phone twice about this, and I was able to get in touch with Mike Johns in Charleston yesterday, and he and I talked about this project for half an hour. A reading here for at least summarizing. I do thank you, Glenn, for clarifying the purpose and nature of this proposal as best you could. Even though it's for electricity generation, it doesn't mean that it's good for our community. Second paragraph. This project to burn natural gas, quote, "as a way to study the generation of electricity" does not hold water. In other words, I was told that the purpose is to study the generation of electricity. But that's already known, and the people proposing here don't have any qualifications to do that anyway. Okay. Third paragraph. I still don't understand why this is a secret project, quite a surprise to the city and county. I'm convinced that there is more to the story because data centers are never cited independent of a data source. The amount of electricity generated will be a nominal 10 megawatts, which is 10 million watts, and that's way too much for processing oil and gas industry data. The system is supposedly going to run 24 hours a day for years. There's a public meeting scheduled by the West Virginia DEP for January 11th, and of course, I plan to offer some comments there. I regret that we're in this dilemma because the reputations of our city and county and the park are too good to be tarnished by such a problematic undertaking. So in summary, there are air pollutants, greenhouse gases. The noises are quantified here. There's bound to be. Think, this is the final concept. Think of it this way. They're going to take natural gas out of the ground, and they're going to burn it, okay? Forty percent of that energy will make electricity. So immediately, there's going to be 60% of the energy that's going to go into the environment as heat. Okay? Then that 40% makes electricity. The electricity is going to be used to run computers, and that results in heat. All of that 40% ultimately ends up as heat in the computers. So they have to use energy in addition to the computers to run the air conditioners or the pumps for the cooling or however the cooling is done, which is not specified. So when you look at that much, there's one more element in the room. After you're done, you had all of the greenhouse gas that resulted from that. So it's a whole series of issues there, the heat dissipation. There will be also some leakage of natural gas, and they're not accounting for that by putting in a tracer. You know, if you have natural gas leak in a residential home, you can smell it because they purposely put a mercaptan in there. It's a sulfur tane compound. But in this case, they're going to use natural gas directly out of the ground, and if there's leaks, nobody's going to know. Two big schools right up above this location. This commission could stop this project or tell them, wait a minute, it's premature. All you need to do is just call Mike Johns, call Glenn Adrian, and say, it's premature. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Nick.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak? Seeing none, go ahead and close public comment section of the meeting. Next item on the agenda, grants. We have none?
No, sir.
Okay. Correspondence?
We don't have anything on the agenda. Nothing came in until late on Monday. But the first item is a letter from the Conalma County Commission regarding HJR-3, Property Tax Modernization Amendment, that will be up for a vote in November of '22. The letter just goes through points about HJR-3 and their impact that they would have on Conalma County, and commissioners are asking for every county commission to contact the county assessor and the sheriff to determine HJR-3 impact on your county finances and the services that we provide. So. Second item is an updated schedule for January of 2022 for the WVU Rec Center for COVID testing and vaccinations. The third item is a check, actually, that we received from the governor's office for $5,000, and it's to aid the counties in the redistricting process. So in January, we will be doing a budget revision to put this into the county clerk's account. So should cover any expenses that they had regarding redistricting.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, that's all I have.
Mr. Bloom, do you have any correspondence?
Commissioner Arnott? Absolutely.
Next item on the agenda is unfinished business. We have none. And new business. Consider approval for requisition number six for Morgantown Industrial Park Series 2021 A Phase III Project Fund.
Move for approval.
Second.
The amount is $683,432.82 payable to March Weston, $20,365.07, and Preston Contractors, $663.067.75. Anything else we need to know about this requisition? Okay. We have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consideration to approve a maintenance agreement by Kone Care for the Elevator Systems of Montague County Sheriff's Department to begin July 1, 2022 for a period of one year. Do I have a motion to approve?
Still move.
Second? Any discussion? First and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consideration to approve the Republic Services Customer Service Agreement for Trash Service at County Facilities at Lockside Road. Motion to approve?
Still move.
Second.
Second? Any discussion? Okay. First and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
To consider for approval a payment agreement proposed by the Supreme Court of Appeals of West Virginia for a family court rent due to the Montague County Commission for the period of February 2019 through November 2021. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move, approve, with discussion.
Enthusiastically second.
Okay. And there's actually, the next three agenda items are all related. This is in regards to our longstanding disagreement with the Supreme Court for our rent due for the family court area of the Justice Center. So I see Joe Statler's here. Actually, Joe Statler is instrumental in brokering this deal. So, Joe, would you like to come up and tell us anything about your efforts? We greatly appreciate them.
Yes. Well, I will tell you that I'm glad this phase is over, that there's an agreement out there. And actually, this started when I was serving as the liaison or the lobbyist for the county commission for a short time in Charleston, that I started talking to the Supreme Court justices. At that time, it was Chief Justice Armstead. So we started working on what we could do and how we could find an agreement that would work for both the county and the state. And because there's, the Supreme Court, of course, has to answer some other groups that's in Charleston about how they rent and do and pay the buildings. So there's some hoops they had to jump through, and they've worked at it. And Chief Justice Jenkins then met with me this year, and we laid out some of the things. And finally, it got to the point where the people that actually does the approval of it called, and we was able to make the agreement. I believe it was a fair agreement that, you know, at least it gives you the back pay from all the time that was already backed that was in question as to whether it went forward. It also gives you a negotiated price going forward, along as there was a disagreement between the two entities as to how much property they actually take up down in that building down there, and that was settled. So I think it was an agreement that come out that will work for the county commission and the citizens of the county and also for the state, so.
And let me clarify. So this first of three agreements, the first agreement is for 34 months. It covers the period from November, I'm sorry, from February 2019 through November 2021. So that's a 34-month period, and that's the back pay. So the rate is $12 per square foot. For the, as Delegate Statler said, it's for $5,780, square feet, which was the number that we had.
Right.
And their number was $5,712. So they've agreed to that. So one, we got the square footage fixed. Two, we got the back pay. So this particular agreement is for the 34 months at $12 a square foot, and then the other agreements will take up going forward. So do want to thank you, Joe. The back pay is critical because if they could have, we didn't sign a lease, so we could not invoice them. So they could have walked away and said, you know, we don't owe you, but I appreciate, it's $196,000 that they're going to pay us in back pay, and I don't think any of us wanted to walk away from that. And even if we got an increase moving forward without that back pay, it would take till November of 2038 before we'd ever make up that lost revenue. So it's a big deal, and we really do appreciate your bird-dogging this and getting it through. So thank you very much.
Well, I thank you guys for what you do, you know, throughout this process. And I did tell them that, you know, we could start eviction notices, and I know you guys have sent extra here that you always have to use a little extra. Well, and I personally want to thank, because this has been a thorn in our side for a number of years, but by you coming up with, and it was a great idea, the compromise of the back pay, which was something we didn't think was going to happen, and you were able to throw that in. I think that's the real reason why I felt like this was a compromise that everyone gave in, but given the back pay, and I think the citizens feel that, you know, we got that money back. So I want to thank you personally, because this has been a long time coming. Well, in all honesty, I would have to give that credit to Chief Justice Jenkins because he said, you know, this money lies there. You can take it out at any point in time, so. We took it. We're going to take it. And that worked out fine, I believe, for everybody. Yes.
Can I shorten that yet?
No, just to echo, thanks for all your diligence on this. You seem to get a lot done in a short period of time, and we greatly appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
So on the first agreement, which is for the period of February 19th through November 2021, I have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Second item is consideration of memorandum of understanding by and between the Mon County Commission of Montague County and the Supreme Court of Appeals of West Virginia for the rental of Montague County Family Court Facilities from December 2021 through June 30th, 2022.
Move for approval.
Second.
So this is this year, which will continue getting paid at a rate of $12 per square foot. So that gets us through the end of this year. So we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then the last piece, consideration of memorandum of understanding by and between County Commission of Montague County and the Supreme Court of Appeals of West Virginia for rental of the Montague County Family Court Facilities from July 1, 2022 through June 30th, 2027. Do I have a motion to approve?
Still move.
Second.
Okay, so this agreement, as you see, it's through fiscal year '27, and it's at $14 per square foot, which is about a 17% increase. It's like 16.6% increase. And then at the end of agreement, it would renew for one more year for fiscal year '28, and then after that, we would negotiate each year going forward. So again, thank you, Joe, for brokering this deal. I think it's very fair, and I'd like to move forward and put this thing behind us as soon as possible. So you have anything to add?
No, no. I think it's, I believe it's the highest in the state for family court. So I think the public needs to understand that, yes.
That's a great deal.
First and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. To consider for approval an engagement agreement with Lewis Gasser PLLC for legal representation for the review of the proposed Montague County subdivision regulations for compliance with West Virginia law. Motion to approve?
Still move.
Second.
Second? Okay. Any discussion? Basically, we're doing our due diligence to ensure that we have checked all areas of the proposed ordinance, so they're going to take, we had some local input that some of the areas of the ordinance may not be in compliance with state law and not, and I don't know if that's probably a strong, well, let's just say they may not be in compliance, but we may be talking about semantics between our ordinance and the state regulation, but they're going to look at it. And again, as we've been going through this process, we've been looking at everything that's been brought to us, and this is just another step of us doing our due diligence, so.
I do want to make, put on the record, though, I still am looking forward to seeing the consultants who we hired to give an explanation concerning how it related to that one subsection, Jeff, what was it, 36B, is that?
Yeah.
And I still want an answer from them. We pay them funds. I believe they need to respond, and then that also can be reviewed. I think that's very important, Joe.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Consideration to approve extending the deadline requirement of the Montague County Handbook, Employee Handbook for Employees to Use Paid Annual and Personal Leave by December 31st, 2021 to June 30th, 2022.
Move for approval.
Second?
Second.
Do we have a second? I'm sorry.
Yeah, second, yeah, second.
This change is self-explanatory and is being made to allow employees more time to utilize their earned leave and not to punish them for the effects of the continued COVID pandemic and more specifically, the Delta and Omicron surges. So we're just allowing more flexibility as we did last year. So anything else to add to this?
No.
Okay. We have first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consideration to approve documents related to the purchase of property at Myland Park in regards to the Montague County Extension Services and 4H Center. Do I have a motion to approve the purchased documents as presented?
Still move.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just to clarify, the name of the building is Montague County Center.
No. Yes.
We had been talking about this purchase since we built the building, and we were paying a ground lease for the building, and we even had an understanding that anything that we paid for the ground lease would go towards the purchase of the property if we ever were to go that route. Earlier in the year, we started working on a purchase option, and as we were working through it, as our kitchen was opening up and as our building, as we got our venue manager in place, we just decided, hey, it's just as easy to go ahead and work on a purchase agreement rather than a purchase option and go ahead and take that option now. So that's what we decided to do. The purchase price is $583,357. That's $125,000 per acre, and it's basically a 4.643 acre for two parcels. Our lease payments to date were $22,499.91, so the purchase price will be, after credit, will be $560,857.09. So do we have a motion to approve?
Oh, we have a motion to approve? A second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Consideration to approve, consideration to release RFP number 2021 MCC CRP 002 in relation to slope grading and tow rope installation for Chestnut Ridge Park.
Move for release.
Okay. A second? Okay. And basically, this sounds very familiar because we just released RFP CRP 001 in November? Is that the beginning of November? We?
Yes.
Okay. We had two responses, and there was a $78,000 difference between the two, and in the end, we really couldn't establish price reasonables. And part of that was due to a few unclear areas of the RFP. So we have certainly tightened the RFP up and made it so it's, any of those questions could be resolved, and now we're putting it back on the street. So hopefully, we'll get good responses, and we'll get this project done in the spring with grass on the hillside by the time our summer season opens. Well, we're hoping to have grass on the grass by May. So anything else on this one?
Just looking forward to it.
A first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any other new business?
That's enough.
Reports from elected officials and/or department supervisors. Delegate Statler?
I am Joe Statler. I'm a member of the House of Delegates. I come here today, there's actually three things I wanted to bring forward as concerns from me to you. The first is, and it's not a concern, but I just wanted to pass on, I just received notice that Clarence Harvey, Dr. Harvey, longtime educator in this county and also a board member, has passed away this morning. So I just wanted to let the commission know that. He was 95, and he has served the community forever. He started out on the Western End, and I believe in his 30s. So he's been all over the county and done much for the people of this county. The second thing is, I just wanted to, and I'm sure you guys are aware, that we will have a bill, and I'm sure it'll be passed, to give pay raises of 5% to all state employees across the state of West Virginia, and also, one time, 2.5% bonus pay that will be out there. And that's going to be probably, I've seen, in about the $180 million range for that, the two combined together.
Can I ask that you clarify the governor's name for that? We'll put you on the spot.
Well.
Inflato scene? Is that what it?
I believe that was what it was referred to as.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
And I would say that it's not been voted upon yet, but more than likely, it will take place. So I don't know what that will do to you guys and your county workers. I'm sure everybody wants a pay increase with the cost of goods and things is out there, so. The third thing, and the major thing, is troubling to me, and it's a statewide, to me, epidemic that's going on. We know we have a nurses shortage, and we saw that the governor yesterday announced a $48 million, hopefully, a fix to, I think, to get 2,000 nurses out in the next four years. I won't get into the discussions as to some of the reasons I think that could have been better done, but at least it's putting something out there. My next concern is a little more, and it's coming local. Our EMS services across the state of West Virginia, I can just tell you, it's in an epidemic stage for a lot of reasons. Some of them are that we can't get qualified EMTs and paramedics to run the runs, so they're having a shortage. It's a shortage of altogether because I don't have the number. I'm asking for that today. We have very few volunteer services across the state of West Virginia now. Preston County still has volunteer services that's out there. My understanding is, by talking to a colleague last night, that they're going to lose, they've lost two in the last year, and there's more that may. What people don't understand, I think there's 23 counties that has no EMS service whatsoever. Now, you know what that causes. We know as big as Montague County is, that occasionally, there's a lag of getting ambulances where they need to be. I know you guys are working on that issue to see where it's at. I do know that they're down between $4 and $5 million deficit, which for a big service like we have in Montague County, that's critical. So we have a multitude of reasonings out there. We are going to have to find a fix to this. I have asked that some of the money that we're receiving would go to EMS services because unfortunately, in the state of West Virginia, we do have a fire fund out there that some of that money is received from when you pay your insurance premium, and very few people knows that. You pay a little bit of extra money that goes into this fund that funds every volunteer fire company across the state of West Virginia, a little bit in the excess of $47,000. So that is paid through a fund that was put on the insurances, but there is no mechanism to collect the money for the EMS services that's out there. So it's basically, each county has to do what they can do to help keep those services alive. They relied on volunteer services, like the volunteer fire departments, forever, but there was no money to help them, to keep them alive. And I do know that Preston County, my colleague told me last night, that if they would just provide $50,000 to a volunteer service, that will keep them alive and keep them floating throughout this. Doesn't do anything for the manpower that they're down and where that pay is, but it does keep them alive. So I guess the biggest thing is, I just wanted to bring this information to the commission. I know we have problems in Montague County. I know you guys are working on them, and I appreciate that. We've had a couple incidents on the Western End that the ambulance was late getting there. But unless we solve this problem statewide, I'm telling you, I lived through the time, and the only time I ever actually needed an ambulance, it was Funeral Home Hurst, served as the ambulance service. That's what come and picked me up and brought me to the hospital. I don't know what the answer is going to be in this, but I do know one thing. We've got to find an one thing. We've got to find an answer, because we can't afford to keep losing ambulance services, because that just adds on to the critical time it takes an ambulance to respond for one. And two, when that ambulance is responding, we know that somebody else is left in a lurch also. So, you've got to look at where your resources are at. It's not that you pick and choose who you're going to respond to. And then, with all this drug epidemic that we have also going on, it is just, I could probably go on for hours talking to you about all the problems and the issues that's out there. But I hope that I would ask the commission, and I am chair of the Fire and EMS for the state, on the delegate side, I would like to see at some point, the county commission would take up a resolution asking for this to be further studied by the state, and also, a solution be found and from that committee. So, thank you very much, and I appreciate your time and what you guys do for us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Good delegate.
Anyone else? Okay. Reports from county commissioners. Jeff?
Just a couple things that, again, like to thank Delegate Statler. You continue to be the most responsive and involved elected official in the area that we contact with on a weekly basis. And we appreciate your input and all your work. It really is helpful in everything that we do. And even though we're not addressing this till the next meeting, it's the last meeting of the year, and I just wanted to extend a big thanks to our President Sean Skor for serving in that role the entire year. I know it takes a lot of extra time, and you've kept us on the straight and narrow the whole time, for the most part, Tom notwithstanding. And, but we do appreciate all your efforts and extra work, and it doesn't go unnoticed. So, that's all I have.
Thank you.
First, Mr. Nichols, I appreciate you coming here and showing your passion. I want to clear, though, that the WVDEP has set up that public meeting, and I do not believe the county commission should in any way interfere with that public meeting. I think they're the specialists. So, they'll have the meeting, and let's see what comes out of that. But that is what the state has set up, and that's what I'm, I'm going to go with. Second, I do want to thank Delegate Statler for coming in, and especially discussing the EMS issue. I know you and I, being on the western end, and I've been, are getting a lot of phone calls, a lot of concerns. And I appreciate what you said, that it is a, unfortunately, a statewide issue. I will throw out an idea to consider. I know that there's a lot of talk of whether it's doing away with the income tax or the personal property tax. Rather than doing away with it, maybe they could shift some of those funds over there. It's just something I'm going to throw out, as you talked about. Third, and I want to clear, there's a lot of question that people think that we're, they're not running out there because they're doing other, what's it called, kind of runs?
Transports.
Transports. And we met with the group, and that is not the case at all. In fact, we saw the data, and that was one of the questions we wanted to ask. You are correct. This county, this past year, is in short, $4.6 million, not the county, the county EMS, to pay the bills. So, we're looking at different avenues. And just want you to know, we are discussing it, and I do appreciate that. And Jeff is correct. I know, I only wish that we had more of a working relationship with all the people of Charleston, that when you come here, no one knows whether you're a Republican or Democrat. We happen to be Democrats, you're Republican. It doesn't matter. You come and you represent the county and ask for us to work together. And I think that's really clear, and that's happened. The final thing I want to say is, besides, I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas. The Patriot Plus More has matched 157 families. And the outpouring of this community, this is why I enjoy being here. And there is one story I want to just give, to give you an idea of what, what goes on. Ally and Alyssa Reese took this family, and this one boy, all he wanted was a snowboard and snow boots. Nowhere could be found, Amazon, the size and everything. They drove to Michigan, found a store, picked it up, and drove it back. And that's just one of the many stories that you hear. So, again, I can't thank this community enough for reaching out and helping out, and I wish everyone a happy holiday and Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Since the last meeting, last Thursday, we had a Mylan Park Board Foundation meeting. And again, even as we're talking about this, this purchase with Mylan Park, Commissioner or Delegate Statler sits on that board. And we had one last pause, or one last pivot, where we had to put revisionary language in the agreement, because rightfully so. Delegate Statler said, hey, you know, I want to make sure we're protecting, he was protecting the board's interest and saying, we put revisionary clause in there, revisionary clause in there. So, thanks for your, your help on that issue too, Joe. Friday, we had a work session, and we had our Christmas luncheon with our immediate staff. Thank you, Renetta and Colleen, for putting that event on. It was very nice to sit down and have lunch with the employees.
Jenny, too, hopefully, so.
Yep.
Yeah.
It was very, it was very nice. Monday, I had a call with legal counsel, the final, the final steps to get that Mylan purchase, Mylan Park property purchase done. Yesterday, I had a broadband call with our consultants, and then in the afternoon, the three of us met with city officials. Mayor Saleen, City Manager Haas, and Assistant City Manager Kim Lee, Emily Mazzarelli. And it was a very productive meeting. The purpose of the meeting, we were, just wanted to brainstorm with this infrastructure bill that was passed. We wanted to brainstorm things that we, we may, as a county and city, want to focus on. And it just ended up being a really good meeting, just to talk about shared interests. And so, and Tom didn't bring up charter schools. I don't think so.
No, I didn't.
No, it wasn't mentioned.
Today's a.
Wasn't mentioned.
Today's a light day, even though we dispense with a lot of business, so that we won't have to meet next week. Tomorrow, we're going to have a courthouse walkthrough to look at some, some of the front entrance, looking at the possibility of redesigning the front entrance in regards to security and, and just public access. And in the afternoon, I'm going to go to willing, Russ Rogerson, his mother passed away. And I'm going to stop up and represent the county at her funeral. So, I want to wish her, offer or extend my sincere sympathy to the Rogerson family. And I'll be representing the county there tomorrow. And also, sincere sympathy to the Harvey family. So, I've watched Clarence Harvey over the years serve forever on that board. And he's always seemed to be a voice of reason for the Board of Education. This is our last meeting. Next year, we'll continue looking for bigger and better things to do in the new year, and I look forward to it. Thanks again, Joe. Really appreciate all your work you do on behalf of the county. A lot of work that people just don't, behind the scenes, don't realize how much work you do, even out of session, and all these different boards and associations that you also support. Mr. Nichols, thank you. It's always interesting listening to you coming and speaking to us and informing us. We do pay attention to everything you, everything you say. We do try to be very polite and accommodating for anybody that wants to come here and talk to the commission, as we should be. I think Commissioner Bloom is correct. This really is in the DEP's hands right now to have the public hearing, so that they can make a decision whether any further action, and then it kind of will go down that step. So, I do encourage you to participate in that meeting and, and express your desire. And again, you're always welcome to come talk to us, too, because we do listen. And I wouldn't know anything about it if you wouldn't have came to talk to us.
Exactly.
So, there may not even be a public meeting if you didn't come and talk to us. So, thank you for your efforts on behalf of all the citizens. It really is appreciated. In regards to the EMS issue, thank you for bringing that up, Delegate Statler. We have been meeting with Mon County EMS, and we have some things that we are working on to alleviate things in the short term. Again, we did press them. We went, we pressed them about the western county, western end of the county issues. Tom pressed them about, you know, some transport issues. And they explained, you know, they, they told us their numbers, their statistics. They, they told us they, they're answerable to every single incident that we brought up. It is a tough, it is a tough situation when you have an ambulance that's sitting on one end of the county, and then you have a need elsewhere. And as soon as you pull it, it's like Murphy's Law, you know, you're going to need it. And we are paying for readiness. And at some point, we, the commission, we, our citizens, need to realize that, you know, to better serve our community and reduce time, we're going to, you know, we need to pay for that readiness. And again, it's always something where it's not always the most economical to have somebody there prepared, waiting for something to happen. But I, I do tell you that we will fix this problem, and we will continue to be the model for the state as far as how EMS services are administered. So, just stay tuned. We're going to be talking about that a lot in the next, in the next year. Same thing with the nursing shortages you mentioned. Just out of passing, I had lunch with Albert Wright two weeks ago, and he was talking about the nursing shortage. Albert said, well, we're just going to fix that. We're just going to create another school and create more nurses. And I'm like, yeah, that's real easy. And then, two days later, I found Albert on the radio that that's what they were doing. So, you know, you have people like Albert and W Hospitals and Mon Health System. Again, in Mon County, they're the kind of leading the way to push the envelope as far as how we fix those issues. So, we do appreciate all their support. Having said that, I don't think I have anything else.
No. Move to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We're adjourned for 2021.